All right, we'll move on, members of the public. I haven't seen any members of the public waiting. I just dropped the waiting room and they set up until we count so that we don't have to keep on checking. If someone signs in, they're going to show up. We don't have to let them in and monitor that, so, but there's nobody here. So at this point, we'll go on to accounts payable warrant. Accounts payable warrant. Number twenty-three twelve. Dated. I'll make sure I have the right, not payroll. Oh, my, I can't tell. Nine twenty-one, twenty-two. In the amount of twenty-eight thousand, two hundred, seven dollars and seventeen cents. Before discussion, may I have a second? Seconded by Bruce. Any discussion?
Yes, I had sent out the contract and any other company paperwork required by Judy two, three days after he actually finished the work. And I met him at the door because he was here to do some preliminary for some other work that might be done.
This is for Larson's Electric?
For Larson's Electric. And I mentioned to him that I would be having the paperwork in the mail to him shortly. And I asked him if he wanted it mailed or emailed. He said email. So I did get it done. I think that might have been, it was the last select work being yet, so that was Wednesday. And then I had it out into the email Friday night or very early Saturday, I forget which. So there's been almost two weeks and it hasn't come back. So as an incentive to have it completed, I would recommend that we not pay that one. And, uh, or whatever the proper process is, approve it but not release it. Or whether it's best to not approve that one and just release it when he signs it. Uh, or does that mean it has to be on the next account payable warrant? I don't know how it's done.
I think the best way would be, this is for a bill for seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. I said that you wrote to Judy about it and it covers and that. Are you happy it's going to get covered by Arba?
No. No.
Is she very hardy?
Let me see. Some mice in my house. Temporarily, because it's a ninety-seven hundred dollar check from Green Mountain Power to cover. Understand? Well, you want it? Take it one hundred percent out of the budget? It'll probably cover it.
Okay, all right. So you think that will cure no? Okay, this was, okay, I understand what you're saying. That was my next question, which, but we're going to get Green Mountain Power for that.
He said he's going to release the check from ninety-seven hundred.
Okay. Um, I think what Stan was saying, and what I would like to see done is to approve the accounts payable warrant, but including the check payment for seventy-seven hundred, eight, seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars, except hold the check back until he returns his signed papers.
Okay, I have a question. He did work for us before, so we never got in touch with him.
No, but it's a contract. It's, it's a contract he has to sign.
Oh, oh, the contract, not insurance.
Contract and whether or not he has a public domain, whether he has a child, why he doesn't, all those things that Judy files.
That's different.
Yeah, so what I think what we're doing is approving this.
Oh, he'll get his signed papers. He wants his money.
Okay, I did verbally tell him that he would not be paid until those documents were concluded and signed, and that they weren't important.
And we also need to instead, we're supposed to.
Hold on.
Mark, Mark.
Hold on.
Okay.
And it ended with inspectors inspected because it's a commercial building. And he brought in inspector over underneath the guy. But I was there at that time and it wasn't inspected.
Is there any report on that in section that we can put in our file? That would be great if we could put it in our file. Maybe, maybe, maybe Emmett has submitted documents. I'm shutting down, you're going to inspect it.
You did mention. That he's done a lot of stuff. He was here ten minutes ago.
Well, we had, so he inspected the lighting that we did here, and he inspected the generator. So I, that, that's good, but I think there was paperwork with that. All right, we'll find out. But right now, we're in the discussion, but we had a motion to approve. And the second discussion is to hold back the one check for seventy-seven eighty until the paperwork is received.
And he was giving it to him two weeks ago.
Yes.
It was given to him two weeks ago.
Uh, well, probably three days short of, eleven days ago.
Okay, what are you doing that?
Okay, all right. Any other discussion?
And I mentioned this to Dot yesterday, he mentioned his name, but he has not submitted the proper paperwork to maintain his business name with the state of Vermont. There's an annual fee and a form that's required to be sent to the state. And so the state has him as a terminated entity. I emailed him that as well for him to take care of. It's a small annual fee of fifty, a hundred bucks, something like that. Just so you know.
Okay, so it's been written.
Any other discussion?
He knows about that too.
I, I emailed him, the cover letter that I produced regarding the contract. I faithfully given the email that I didn't know what his business name actually was. And I, it was a week, it was Friday night. I didn't want, I couldn't bother anybody. So I logged on to the Secretary of State's office where anyone who has a business acquires this file number and pays the fee and is certified as a legal business entity every single year. I did it when I had my business in Massachusetts. So that's why I knew about it and where it was. So I got his formal name that way because there was no, other than Larson Electric. I didn't know if it was a partnership, sole proprietor, or if it was LLC. Turns out he's an LLC. But, so I submitted the contract, so I had it hopefully right the first time and not have to redo it a second time for everybody to know what the sign was, just to be as quick, concise, and accurate as possible. So he's aware, I put it in the cover letter.
I have to call him tomorrow because there's some outlet issues.
All right, but let's stick to this.
Well, I'll say, uh.
Follow on.
Of course. Yeah, just.
Careful, what are you talking?
All right, all those in favor of approving accounts payable twenty-three twelve in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, two hundred, seven dollars and seventeen cents, with the understanding of holding back Emmett Larson Electric with the paperwork is returned. Signify by saying aye. Aye. All in favor, the motion passes. And I'll pass this around, everybody to sign.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay. Thank you for signing it. I'd like to make a motion to approve payroll check warrant twenty-three eleven dated nine fourteen twenty-two in the amount of four thousand, eight hundred, eighty-four dollars and sixteen cents. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Noga. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving payroll warrant twenty-three eleven for nine fourteen twenty-two in the amount of four thousand, eight hundred, eighty-four dollars and sixteen cents. Signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. I'll pass it around, let us decide it. Okay, um, road supervisor, it's your bills. We know you talked about tree service. I don't know what you would like to report to the board.
Okay, I, only because of the last couple of times that we've had some tree work done. We used Card Tree Service. We had asked Bloom Tree, but because we didn't have the prying equipment, he declined work. So I contacted Card Tree with with regards to a one-day service with his tree company. And he now asked for three thousand dollars for a day of whole service with all of his equipment. Uh, he gets more for residential work, but for the towns, he has this three thousand dollar a day tree removal. And as far as availability, he said he has room for a day in October or November. So I know that we have lots of trees to address. Uh, and I think the high priority hazardous trees for a day of tree removal. I didn't know if he wanted gathered prices from others. Now, there is a road formance meeting coming up October second. It's Town Dover, and they're going to talk about ash tree and ash tree removal. So I didn't, I wasn't quite sure if we should wait. As far as the ash trees though, I don't know if there's some grant money that may be available. There's some sort of a program they're putting together for just ash trees.
I have some sad news though. We're still kind of at the budget and it's
Enjoy it.
beat right now. With the, with the sixty-four thousand dollars, anything that was done, the paving that's getting done now, and Parker Road and Hill Road. No FEMA money has come in yet. And so we're sort of beat right now. I'm concerned about having, I like the idea of dealing with the ash trees after you hear about what the road formance, if there is grant money. I don't like to have hazardous trees left because of lack of money though. And who can say how hazardous is a hazard? I know my lights went last night at nine o'clock and all my lights, all my clocks went off. And a kind of tree branch came down. But, um, do you have any, can you envision any major hazards at this time? I know it is qualified.
It's hard to nail down a tree that's going to come down at a certain time. There was a maple tree on Hill Road. The top broke off and came down the other night during the rainstorm. And I had made a phone call to the power company about that one.
Thank you.
This was over a year ago.
Oh, thanks, Ed.
They threw little stuff near it, but they left it standing. And they, and also trees throughout town are the same. Uh, they have an ongoing list with their contracted tree people. And they know there's going to be trouble and they try to address the the hazardous ones that they can, but there's just so many, they deal with them as they come down. So it's hard, you can't really say. I know that they're dead and pieces are falling. So I guess.
We might have some better information at the next meeting, the next select board meeting. And especially if there's time in November for power company. But if we can bring that back. Table at this time. I guess that's what I'm saying.
It's just fifty, we're fifty, I talked to Melissa yesterday. Quite a while.
Like a member of these, they're trying to hear us.
Okay, I talked to Melissa Brown, she's been quite a while. And the one thing that she brought up was the summer road fund. Is there were fifty thousand in the hole? I said, oh, it's got to be because of FEMA, which it is. My question is, if we allowed forty-some-oh thousand dollars for some maintenance work, getting that fifty thousand dollars back, where, where would we be at? We, we can't do that now with dollars because we don't know what. But what I'm getting at is she said it was fifty thousand dollars in the hole.
That's not what I thought.
That's what she said to me.
It looks like.
I didn't, I didn't gather, she didn't know what other jobs were outstanding and how much we had committed to those. A letter, the email that she sent me, I had my request. And so I sent her that information uh, mid to late afternoon today. Her letter emailed to me prior to that was she would not be encouraging any of her expenses because it looks like we're in the hole. Uh, she didn't say it quite that way, but she said it would be something to reframe and spend any more expenditures for highway. And, and then she finished up by saying, I'm still not quite sure, I need to do more work to know what, or have more information to know exactly where this might work out to be. And that's when I sent her the additional information. And I might have sent, I think, both of you a copy of that email.
And the, the sending of the ninety-two thousand dollars. You know, we had, she may not be aware of any carryover from the previous year. She's just looking at this year too, again.
Well, she did, she, she did one in the financial statements for year end six thirty twenty twenty-two. So unless there's a mistake and she's been pretty good and she's experienced, and I don't know what to make of that. Thought, it's a thought, it may be, but her, her email to me said we, and she actually listed out, I brought it with me. The expenses have occurred since the first of July. Yes, and they're up to ninety-two thousand dollars. So.
Was the paving.
Yes.
Separated into the treatment budget? Because that's a separate budget in the Hill Road. It has its own budget that money set aside, just for paving and treatment.
I recall that balance was, was in the forty-five thousand dollar range. Because it was thirty, it was thirty or thirty-five last year, and then we added fifteen in this year's current budget to bring it up to the forty-five, I think. So the forty-five is less than the sixty-four by nineteen thousand. So I would assume that's negative of that amount at least for that. And she listed the others, and there was another thirty thousand that comes up in that list for other things.
Right, it's the Alka rentals, the summer AS Clark materials. Also Bates and Brothers.
Well, often it should be in a summer, summer lease or rental property.
Right, but it's still, still on the highway.
It is, it is, but we had budgeted monies for them. So we still overshot it.
Been with him in favor.
But they had it, that's the thing. If we didn't, we wouldn't be talking about this right now. And I'm going to call her, I emailed her today, calling her tomorrow. And so you've got to release what has been approved, what I've signed off on, what you've agreed on, what you've signed off. It's ridiculous.
How long ago was that then?
It'll be a year in July.
No, no, I meant since, um, since, since it, well, I remember back in the winter, this guy was saying, we're going to have money uh, by the end of June.
Yeah, that's a year, it never happened. Never happened.
Oh, I know.
And she's, you're getting stalled now.
Yeah. We basically switched the manager on us. Maybe for the better, I'm not sure. But the woman that I'm dealing with, she was away for a week. I was away for a week, and we touched base today, and I'll talk to her tomorrow. But she's got to release, she wants to talk about mitigation issues, you know, and how mitigation will help. But I, I just, I'm like, we're, we're doing this FEMA work, but you're not compensating us back. So we're, this is a small town, this is a problem.
Just totally love checks. I'll leave decisions at work.
Maybe I'll feel the same.
You know, we're talking fourteen months now at the end of this month.
Yes.
That's ridiculous.
It is.
We're entitled to the money. When you guys do get a wire and pay that, oh, I know.
I think we're, on rental, the budgeted amount is close to eight thousand dollars, and we're up over sixteen. And I think it's just in twenty-five.
For what?
But with the anticipation that last year a hundred percent of the rental was covered by the we, we put that in for the reimbursement a hundred percent last year. And we'll get percentage, we'll get some of that money back this year too.
Right.
But I guess.
I, I know that, I'm going to, what do we have to put out with cash, I know, in the future. So I'm good to know that.
Yes.
Good to know that.
And of course taxes had a whole collective either for the year, only one quarter's taxes.
That's true. So hopefully we'll receive grant when that.
Right, grant money's coming back now.
And I also sent her, she wanted to know what the budget was for fiscal year twenty-three. So I sent her a copy of the town report, which included the budget we had worked on last.
Right, right.
So she's got all stuff now for her to look at it, and come up with an opinion.
This is a FEMA one?
No.
No, this is not a list of.
All those monies. And I refer her to Dot for any FEMA, right, particulars that might.
And she's working with the same woman, so she, she, and they wasn't, yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah. So.
Okay.
All right, so.
We got a handle on it, but not, not a number.
But this is, this is holding us up because we can't do anything in some, some road fund because we're in the hole big time because of FEMA.
I think last year we stopped the Hill Road project because last year we were running short of money at the same time because they were we expended a lot of initial work with AS Clark when they did the emergency work.
Do we have money to pay Clark?
Have you got, you have your hands across things? No.
I'm going to town, so I'm good to go.
It's the fact that the paving's taking place on the mountain and the grant works is underway on Hill Road.
Right.
And the only other thing was it would be nice somehow we could, after we have our Zoom meeting with FEMA rep, if we could. I, I thought, I think it would eat the, our advantage to put the three-foot diameter culvert in this year.
If, if they could give us some money, we could put it in school, that's what they have to understand.
I, I noticed that the last two guys we've gotten rain, such as rainfall rain. I noticed Ed, the guy that went right where the major part of the road was standing there with driveway, and he's a little nervous.
Yeah, nobody wants to live that way.
And I actually dug on the outlet side of that culvert that's there. It's partially plugged and squished to the point where they just couldn't take the flood volume more, you know. I feel if somehow we give up something or if we.
That if we go sooner rather than later.
Yeah, before before winter seasons, have it done and allow it to set up a little bit.
Okay.
Better with it.
Actually, no more, more of that.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yep.
All right. Well, then we're going to move on to the next item?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, Highway Mr. Noga, what could you share with us?
Okay, it sounds like we're going to meet the timeframe on Hill Road so that we won't lose the grant money on that project. Uh, I will do the contract that and email it to AS Clark tomorrow. So they will have that then, and I will, when I go home, I'll just send notes coming. Apologize for the delay.
And Stan, could you just remind me, what was that deadline for that?
Uh, they wanted it, they wanted the report with the photos and said by the thirtieth of this month, which is next Friday. And I'm unfortunately on vacation next week. So, but irrespective of my vacation, I contacted the fellow that you and I had walked the roads with that day. Jeff Ningen? And, and said, I, I wasn't sure that the work would be done on time and is there any leeway? And he said, yeah, there's a few days leeway. I had a suspicion it could be a week or two, and then he said, all right. So after that's done, you and I got to work together and take the photographs and, and whatever we need to fill out with his assistance to get that grant money over and done with and file the actual plan for the grant.
Okay.
Uh, so probably the week after, the first full week of October, I guess.
Yeah, if you.
Uh, whenever it's a good date for you.
Yeah, you, you give me a notice and I'll be there.
Okay. So we will get that money in a little bit. So Linda costing the town roughly twelve thousand plus, between twelve and thirteen thousand, as opposed to.
Eighteen thousand.
Yeah, eighteen thousand. Uh, Mark. So, so that, that, that's answers, I think, your question, it's one of the things I didn't talk about. Uh, so the contract, and then, and you already know, Mark said that with the paving's going on. I, to, to help us out on the highway and road grant, there's been some discussion over the past. I think you and Dot, if I'm wrong, let me know. We were talking about, we didn't know, we had reasonably that the bond that we had gotten could be used for other things and possibly the bridge. Navy roads, maybe a heavy equipment. So I'm thinking, 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 uh, I really got to do something to speak about that, find out as soon as possible. Because I'm going to be away and then, you know, we already missed the first loan application date for heavy equipment with the people that we would have to apply with. So now the earliest we can look at getting a piece of equipment, if things fall together right, would be any of those. So.
Were you talking about the hundred, we weren't talking about ten thousand.
What's left of the hundred thousand. It's now ninety thousand. Okay, it's, it's in an asset account. So it's money to be played with if we can play with it for the right reasons.
So we're researching that.
Okay, and we've been using that money to pay the payment? No, that's the budget.
We've always collected five thousand to pay.
Yes, I thought so. Okay.
So from here on out, we shouldn't have to do that unless we use that money for something else. So it's there, because then it has to be made up. It's not.
You're going to really find out if we can go on a spending spree.
Yeah, well.
Or pay our bills.
We pay bills, and then we've been looking, we've been looking at getting, Mark, and, and this has been the subject of the town for years now, if we can get that, if we can make up any deficits in terms of being less dependent for immediate reimbursement, mandatory reimbursement from FEMA. It, it takes a big burden off everybody around the table in the town.
Sure. How many years do we have, do you remember how many years? You said about ten, you gave a figure?
Well, nine.
Nine, okay.
Okay, and so, so I, I brought it up and I said, I identified myself, my role, et cetera. Spoke with her about it, asked her the question. This is, we're, we're in a bind right now because of some issues with another federal entity, with eight federal entities. And it would be nice to have this money to play with. And I explained the fact that it isn't an asset account with a ninety thousand dollar balance. And we've been collecting from the citizens the annual ten thousand dollars, but we're at a point now where we're going to take ten thousand a year out of that asset to pay the annual liability until it's down to zero. Or can we use that money and continue doing what we've been doing, which is to attend in a bunch? So she said, I don't know the answer. I'm the controller. I don't know the policies and procedures. And she said, the other thing I don't know is what category that loan was made to you under. I am aware that in some circumstances, and this is optimistic. She said that they have allowed the towns to spend it for certain overthings if the loan isn't a certain category. So she says, I can't say they will, I can't say they won't. The gentleman that will most likely handle it is out of the office until August. The guy that's the president or director, he is not available at earliest until Friday afternoon. She says, I have no doubt for me back to you between Friday afternoon and sometime early next week to answer your question. And then I did one other thing. Because I just thought I'd double check. I said, we were told some time ago that if we just took all the money in there and paid, the whole thing will off. It's going to be the same as our money.
We couldn't do it.
Would, is it better for us, less costly, if we pay it off now? Or given the fact that it's in a bond pool, is it going to be more costly for us to pay that off now? Because if we can save.
The way I understood it, to us, you couldn't pay over it.
That's what they said before. I'm just rechecking. And she asked me a question. And I don't know what to make of it, she said, when we pulled that? And I said, oh, several years ago. The only reason she could have said that was maybe the change in rules.
Okay.
You know? Or, or she does not familiar with it and doesn't know what she thought she'd ask. So in any event, I told her, I said, it's probably four or five years ago that we were told that. And, and so she said she would relate that and the fact that we want to use it for roadwork, possibly equipment purchase. I specifically said that. We got roadwork that needs to be done. Possibly equipment purchase. I specifically said that. We got roadwork that needs to be done. We're also contemplating buying some equipment. And it would be wonderful, if God sent, if we had use of that money.
And she gives you the answer since we'll have it writing?
I would insist on it.
I'm sure you do.
When I got the twenty-seven thousand dollars from the town from the ACCD back last time I was on the board, I got everything in writing.
Yeah.
So that nobody could read that along the way. Okay, and I would do the same here with this supplies. Okay? So, so I've done that and, and I think I sent you each an email about it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so that you have your files, what I've asked and what, and what I expect that to go. Okay. Uh, short of, short of having said those things, I have nothing further to add.
Alright, well, thank you very much, Daryl, and, uh, work on those grant costs too, guys. Mister Fella, you're next.
Okay. Uh, heat pumps are done up and running.
Fantastic, thank you.
And they're beautiful. And I've been getting on Stephanie's. I don't say that. Uh, Stephanie's, uh, whatever. To read the booklet and, and next week when I come back or a week from when I. I, I don't want to hear anything that they're using those gas boilers instead. So I'm gonna be looking to make sure that they have their timers set on the heat pumps. I was suggesting to them, if you want to, heat set, set me whenever that is that you set the gas, the gas boilers. Five degrees anyway below the heat pumps, so that they don't come off, not what's necessary, not to do the reverse. You follow? Okay, uh. Waiting on the ninety-seven hundred dollars from Green Mountain Power.
When is that gonna come?
Uh, he told me last week I'll get the check up. So whenever that comes.
So it's within a month.
Hopefully. And I also. Uh, at, at the time of Lars Lush was over here and Ken was over here, I had a look at this building, the, the heat pumps. And you're just, and blanking giggles. And we get some, we get some money back on that too. So I'm not at this point ready to, to tell you how much net on that is. What, what we could do. But initially. Dan Matty, Green Mountain Power, we're getting the ninety-seven hundred dollars. What are you doing on heat pump? I said, no, we're doing two heat pumps. And he had me submit to him three years oil bill for this building. And he's looking into it, see if he can get some more money. You guys twenty-seven hundred bucks. For Susie's, I was like stunned. So I don't know what, how that's been all shakeup. Maybe I know some answers. Okay, okay. Uh, I've had a problem with the UV system. As you know, we have two UV systems, two power supplies, two everything. It appears as though, I call Niko, that's the company that makes the proteus, proteus system. And it appears though the power supply and left hand side is shot. I, and I found out a way to corroborate it. That's what he said. After all my analysis and explained. So I went over there today, said, ah, this is easy. I could just take that all, put it on the good side, put all the good stuff in and see if it works. But I didn't have time. Although I had to start taking apart the, the, uh, the tube and everything that I could to this day, so. I'm gonna triple check to make sure that there is nothing wrong. That is broken, but we still have one, um. One, we've set up this working and we have spare parts for. Pardon me, just about everything. Um, lastly, like I said a few minutes ago about the wood, uh, for, for, um, that was cut. Excuse me, we're gonna do some, cut up the tops and wood chip the boughs somewhere in October. Mark's gonna call up Jay, a new fan to see if they'll let us use their wood chipper. Or ready to us or something to clean up the mess that was made.
Oh, good, that would.
So we'll clean up the boughs and the tops and everything. And there's a couple more trees that need, that are pretty ragged and need to be removed, but, um. That's it.
Okay. Alright, um, I've got new town report from Mister Tanza, uh, um. I don't really have much of a select board chair report. We did, I did have another animal foul complaint or the dog barking that with that. Uh, we're, we're working on how officer situation, we're working with that, um, and Bruce.
So that's your report. I talked to you on. Melissa yesterday, quite a while. I really like her. Uh, and. Uh. We're, we're, we're talking about the fact that we're understaffed. Select board. And she's the one who's getting administrative assistant. I joked a lot, I'd have beaten up on top forever about that. She. And, and she's at full time administrative assistant. I saw that here and there, the problem with getting an administrative sys- assistant is part time. Is not much to offer and who's gonna wanna do it? And I asked her, she said she would do it, she would. Mention this to you, that she's gonna look out and see if there's anybody that might be interested in, um, fill that position if, if we.
Well, that, that's one of those things that we, we, we. Hossled around here and there. We can talk about this under old business, um, administrative help that we tabled on nine seven. But, well, yeah.
That's it, that's all, that's all I have to say about any of it, so.
Okay, very good. Any, any other select board discussions that we'd like to bring up?
I've been emailing her. Obviously, you've been talking with her. Uh, I'm wondering if I should draw back a little bit and not ask her questions and ask someone else to ask her? I just don't want to inundate her with lots of questions.
She's fine.
She is?
Oh, I, I talked to her for the half an hour yesterday. She's pretty good. She has no problems with us at all. And, you know, it's. I, I don't sense any. Blowback.
Okay.
At all.
Alright.
Zero.
Good.
Or minus zero. She has a great ass. Thank her. And whatever, that's pretty, pretty much it.
The other reports?
Uh, not till old business.
Okay, uh, under new business, I just wanted to, to say the Brookline Meeting House grant, Brookline Meeting House has completed their. Grant application, uh, granted, they wanted to put the bids with that came in. However, um. We didn't get any bids. I'm not sure. I clearly went back to the bid and it is here dated September twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, six thirty P M. They will be open at approximately six forty-five P M, so I'm not sure who tabled that at this time. Uh, I was just gonna make through this and then I was gonna put this in the select words mailbox.
Okay.
And anybody can take it out and just read through it. Uh, I'm, I'm not asking for anybody to edit or modify it because I think the committee at the Vermont Preservation. Is, is qualifying, will, will review this and see the merits of it.
Well, we're not at price.
We don't have, no, well, we didn't get a bid for the, for the floor, so I'm not sure. How would the select board like us to handle it if they're.
Tell who we are, we have no.
I did.
I mean, you did, you did.
Well, I think there's one more step we need to go beyond, and it's that. I thought that as part of submitting the application, it needed to be submitted with a bid. Otherwise, it can't be done. So it would appear, unless one materializes between now and the.
They can't do it.
Deadline date, there's no.
They have no numbers.
And if they've already done the app, then I don't need to be involved with that already. So.
Yeah, you're right, Stan. It's a little ancient since they did the last one. And I think that's correct. They have to, you have to have. Certification of, of, of amount.
Right, historic preservation trusts, and I'm used to preservation trusts, so.
Yeah.
They, they had a different procedure. I don't.
No, I believe you're correct.
But in the past, when you and I were on the board, it was always felt that there had to be a bid, so you know what, that the amount you're looking for applies. And the fifth of the decalibration could be done after.
I still have that big word.
When it goes to committee for approval.
Wow, I saw that bid stuff at home. I kept, uh, that's right in there too. But anyway, I'm pretty, pretty sure that's.
So this is two years in a row, not because anybody is trying to screw things up, that it was deferred. I'm wondering if we, if there's another time other than the fall that an application can be made, so they start with, and start. Two and a half months ahead of something. I mean, we already got the RFP, we just need to republish RFP for the future date, maybe further ahead of time. You know?
Okay.
I would have thought this should have been primed for this because it's the fall and anybody who is into that business wants to plan for next year.
Since nobody responded, maybe the animal. React to Kerry Born and maybe they'll come up with, this is all Kerry Born's work, correct? This is all his right.
I have no idea. I don't think he submitted a bid. I don't think he's.
No, he did not submit a bid. Got no bids.
Yeah.
Okay, so, alright, so I, I communicated.
We came up with the idea of how all that worked. On how to do it. Still came up with.
As I said, she, it, this, this, this are due to us by the twenty-seventh. And it's not due the twenty-seventh, the bids are due on the twenty-first. So I don't know if there's some miscommunications. I don't know. But in any case, we tabled any. Work on this. We'll have to move on. There's no new business to decide on.
Okay, one quick question.
Yes, sir.
The RFP, it, it indicated they had to contact Liam, correct? I believe it did. Hopefully she didn't tell.
If you're gonna site visit, contact the Brookline Meeting House Chair Liam Barker at jasonlee@gmail.com.
So if there, she had a misunderstanding of date and she had entertained somebody, she misadvised and asked.
She would have known. She sent me a, a text today about dropping this at my house, dropping it in the box. I said, bring it to the box. Well, I will forget it then, okay. So she, she was aware of times. Alright, we shall move, oh, the other thing was before, new business, uh. Yesterday, when Stan and I were meeting briefly, Guy Tansy came in and asked about our salt supplies and getting things moving. And so I sent that an email to both Cargill and to American Rock Salt, just to see what's up. And Ro- American Rock Salt sent us back a bid, uh, already of ninety-four dollars per ton delivered. Uh, I wasn't. You know, so I'm just gonna wait for Cargill. It's just a fluke thing and it got back to me right away, but it will be on the agenda for the next meeting. Okay?
Good.
Alright, uh, we need, alright, Windham Regional Commission Services and Brands Administrative Help, we, we tabled it on nine seven. I'd like just to start by saying, when Dan and I were in here yesterday, we, okay, I'm gonna show you what we did. I'll show everybody. We did this. We opened up a file. And we went to take a look at. Bids. This is how, this is what the file looks like, okay, I sort of. It's got, for years worth of this. We need someone to come in and, and. You know, if it was a church, I think we'd get volunteers, but this is a municipality and I don't want to have, I, I would like someone with some responsibility to come in. Just sort through, file things by date and contract. And because it's just, it's. It's just all.
Totally, yeah.
All in here. And that's just one file. So when we look at administrative, we think, you know, startup, it's just file keeping, um, and. You know, you somehow can fire a full-time administrative assistant to do anything, but we can start off as cleaning up some of the. Stuff.
You know, that's where the problem was, I think, in that, you know, nobody's gonna wanna do part-time. That's my guess. And I even, I threw that by Melissa because Melissa said, full-time assistant. Uh. Administrative assistant. And so that's where the problem was. Because to get, and then she said she could throw some of her time and work towards that administrative assistant. She said that.
She might be interested in helping out a little bit more than what she's doing.
No, meaning that some of her work that she does could be transferred to this person that took over the administrative.
Yeah, develop a, an understanding of what is an administrative assistant. We don't have any full-time members. We.
I would wanna follow that train of thought a little more deeply. Is she saying she doesn't need the hours she currently has assigned to her?
No, she.
And that she can spend more time doing something else for a full twenty hours?
None of that was.
Josh, get a text for her?
It's recording with.
Sorry, I don't know the answer to this one.
Is that what's that, what's that, Alexa?
Yeah.
Yeah.
She was typing everything you said.
She, she decides when she wants to do it.
So, so she's not, so what does she, what does she, what does she?
All she was saying is, when I responded, the fact that the problem is a problem getting a full-time administrative assistant. Because we were initially thinking of a part-time administrative assistant. He said, well, maybe she could do some of the things that I. She lost some of her work towards this other person. She wasn't saying anything that you would say. No, she's not.
So she's been looking for extra hours.
No.
What else can I be?
No, no.
And she's gonna do it. She's gonna do what?
She wants to pass some of her work to somebody.
No, she said in order to satisfy the need of filling a, a full-time administrative assistant, if there were shorts. Shorts and hours, she might feel, feel off some of her work if filled that position.
I'm not looking for a full-time anybody.
I am not, I, I do not necessarily.
Yeah, we don't have.
Heavy, or, or a small town, you wanna walk into some of the other towns, see if they have the staff. I would recommend that most, not that this is on your gen, uh, since it's brought a part-time, if you have advice, you might be a high school student. That's what they would do. Can try that? I don't know if you're gonna get an adult. I mean.
You can try it. I'll tell you one thing.
You've been running around with the.
Last night, yesterday, Stan and I went downstairs to look up some finance figures in nineteen, two thousand and eighteen's. Boxes, and I was very impressed with the neat and organized system that those files were organized in. Weren't they nice? They were just very.
Couldn't say better.
This was something that maybe Judy would be interested in adding some hours to this filing, something, someone of, you know what I'm saying, or, or Gwen, like.
Well, she wants to do more work, you know, she's.
But.
Quite retired.
How do you want to, so, alright, so now let's talk about Windham Regional Services and Brands, um, hear a little bit more about what they have and, and I can think. Just starting off with something, and it's like that file's a mess.
We have the cloud, we have to start with somebody that will.
Then I.
And so. You have to find, you have to start with somebody that will, is admitted, is willing to do some of this work. I, I don't understand where you're coming at, coming at that way. Oh, you need to string down the pot. No, we need more than that. You need assistance and probably Stan needs assistance too. Uh, so we need. To maybe develop a position, uh, and try and advertise, as we've done this before, haven't we? Not.
Yeah, and everything, anything.
I, I've got enough things on my plate. If someone wants to sit down and organize some kind of list of the kinds of things someone's gonna do, I should go for it.
Yeah, well, I'm just wondering if, uh, we're gonna get a response to it, you know, and.
I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm through, you know, thinking ideas.
I'm not looking for to create extra work. I'm, I'm looking to do the honest.
I am too, but I don't think we need someone full-time. What are you gonna pay?
Okay, 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 okay. That was Susie doing.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just looking to fill a need, and I see the need being that you guys do a lot of stuff. That could be panned off to an administrative assistant. Am I wrong?
Well, some of it I can and some of it I can't.
There you go.
There's tie racks and stuff and there's aspects of it will change from contract to contract.
Okay.
The work I did on the retirement program, I would not trust too many.
I understand.
Unknowledgeable people to do.
I understand. And I'm not looking to, to, to stop you from doing it. Alls I'm saying is, this lady right here is buried with work all the time. And I would like to see who gets some help. So I'm open for suggestions and I, this is, and I think we should pursue.
Very kind, appreciate it.
Yeah, that's all I'm looking at.
So Windham Regional Services and services for providing that, that they have.
Ministry of.
They, they actually can, like, if we needed a town manager to come in or some.
Oh, so a little serious.
Yeah, those are serious positions, you know, issues, um.
Okay.
I don't know what level of administrative assistance they offer. I would be perfectly, as an aside question, willing to ask. Uh, Margot, what, what? This is our dilemma. This is where we are. As concisely and quickly as possible.
Yeah.
Is that barking up your tree? And if you, and what if, and if it is, what have you experienced in other towns? How many hours does it contain? What kinds of things are they doing? To work at it from that end, instead of we, never having had one, try to guess what someone else would wanna do. To make it important enough for them and worthwhile for them economically to spend time when you're doing it.
Or maybe somebody from another town, and Doug Hill is looking for some extra work into doing administrative work for the town of Owlbacks, or whatever. Now is willing to do another ten or fifteen hours a week with us.
I wonder, is, is, uh, missing, uh, Newfane's administrative assistant?
No, this is Paul.
Full-time yet.
Full-time.
Well, sir?
But, if her administrative assistant, do they have one at Newfane that's full-time?
Yes. One at the power, I think.
Yeah, okay. I guess I bought a word.
I heard the name, but you have probably seen her, but, um, I just wondered if she was on their clock at full-time or part-time.
Full-time.
And I suspect she's pretty spiffy because when I was doing work, when we had problem with storm rain. Ed asked me to appraise some properties that the town could buy out that had been flooded. And the person who was the administrative assistant, that is the person I interact with, that person was sharp. She had control of the files. She knew what was going on. She's interacted with FEMA. She interacted with the subdivisions for the state in between FEMA and, and that is their administrative assistance capability and I have no doubt. And, and that is their administrative assistance capability, and I have no doubt this thing is the same.
Because Winata Powling, whom I've dealt with a little bit because I bought a little. Uh, very nice lady, never met her, built a nice lane on the phone, really, I'm very happy, anyway. But Melissa Brown knows what we're looking for, and she knows Winata Powling, because she worked with us. So I would say that if that's even an option, I'm sure, I'm sure it would get back to us.
I'm gonna make a suggestion.
That she was, you're hung?
Um, I, I, I already said, I'd like to talk to Winata just to find out a little bit more about, about what she does and where she learned and, and skills. All right. I would then like to consider sending an email out to any employee that we have here at Town Hall. Our listers, our treasurers, our assistant treasurers, our auditors, our.
Former.
Committee members. Say, we're looking, or, or, or is anyone interested in coming aboard and assisting us? In a part-time basis, we determine hours and salary to.
Okay, I like that.
The working house. And if we don't get any response that way, then we put it out to the lister. And then that we go to front there, and then we go to some others, but I think we need to start it now.
Yeah, well, you said a point there. It's kinda like what we're doing with the logs with Mark. Hand it out to the town first, see if it integrates into suit that, then we move out of this.
All right, so I'll, I'll talk a little more on that. It's just, just to familiarize myself a little bit about what an administrative assistant really entails.
Uh-huh.
Um, and then I'll, then I'll come up with a letter to the staff, anybody who I can find in my email list and send it out. And, and report that next meeting.
To, to, to even look at this kind of more of a en- completed circle. I believe Melissa completed the employee's income and, uh, report to the LCQ. I would almost bet in that we, yearly summary that we now have access to because she completed it. Uh, is for statewide, if not this region of the state, what other administrative assistants are being paid. So that we know going into it, this is what we want, but by doing this, what are we gonna be committed to?
Right.
Yeah.
So that little bitty may be added to that so that we have a more, not get into it and find out, oh, it's gonna be too expensive.
Yeah.
All right, well, that's very good. Thank you for your time and consideration on this, and I think it will be helpful for all of us. So know that some of the, some of the tedious tasks will be lifted from, uh, us, and we'll be more organized. Anybody who comes in new, goes into that file, there's duplicated, there's, it's all duplications in there. There's nothing, and it's all years. It's not sorted by years. The file, the financial files downstairs are beautifully done.
Who's it?
I don't know. I guess, I don't know. But already for the auditors, it's really nice and organized, clean and.
Who is the person we had new through, I don't know.
Oh, Louise.
Louise.
Oh, Louise.
I wonder, she.
She did some of that, but I'm, yeah, in two thousand and eight, it probably would have been around.
Yeah, she could have been around like three, four years ago.
Okay, I think she would have been.
Right, but it's fallen away.
Yeah.
Not, not to belittle the point, but, well, I was in there after you left. Yesterday, I found stuff like photos of the bridge that we repaired, that we used the bond for. Sitting under a pile of stuff on top of something else. I put them in the file, just try to help organize a lot.
Right.
There's a lot that could be done.
Right. And I, and I know at one point we said, you know, by the time I volunteer to do it, this is a municipality, it's not a church. It's not a, it's not a food bank kinda thing. We, we need to hire somebody.
Yep.
And maybe sponsors for that. Okay, all right, next old business, uh, beamers versus paychecks requirement of funds discussion. We ended up tabling that as well, um.
If you get, please, uh.
Yeah, it's thirty-eight to go, yes.
Yes.
I have a question. And excuse me if I'm being simplistic. But this all started thirteen months ago. That was when we started. And, and initially, uh, there is good intentions. Guy said we couldn't do it because we had to go through people, people bank because of our accounts. That's one of the questions I asked Melissa yesterday. I said, Melissa, what's stopping us? From having Mark make a contribution to the bank? An IRA? And he's got an account number, and he brings a receipt back to the treasurer. And then correspondingly, make the payment. See that then, there'll be account number. I think this is gonna, my opinion, this is gonna be way out of hand for paying people to do this. It's not as if, it's not as if we have five, ten, twenty, thirty people that are under this situation. We have one person that we made a commitment to, to give him a retirement plan. So my suggestion is that, and I tried to call, I tried to call the LCQ. The LCQ twice. Take, hold it off. Yesterday, couldn't get sleep. I don't know what's going on. I was trying, before this meeting, I was trying to clear my idea with them before I bothered you all with it. But like I said, maybe I'm being too simplistic, but if that man over there went to wherever he wants the bank and sets up an IRA. And he's got an IR and he says, Melissa, I put a thousand dollars into your IRA today. Here's my receipt with the account number, and we cut a check for the, the five percent that goes through the AP warrant that's signed off by, by a select board, and it goes into that account.
Sounds simple.
I know, that's why I said it. I made a.
Municipal government, it's not, it's not the way it works, so.
Why?
Because it's a town municipal government and it's taxpayer money. So, we may need to, and this is what, you know, you've gotten some paperwork that Stan has shared. We may need to sit down in an executive session, since it's dealing with an employee. And renegotiate or decide on how to renegotiate that.
Okay.
That.
I go where you're going.
Process. And may not, the IRA may not fly because we would have to then set it for everyone.
Okay, just a moment. I think.
We may have to.
Detail it.
Really, I hear a lot of many names and we're all not sure about many answers.
Thank you.
I got everything. But I, I'm suggesting, ask, ask the LCQ exactly what, what that thought is, and if that's the way to do it. Have you already contacted them?
I already contacted Melissa. They said, go to them. They don't, they don't get involved. They don't do the retirement.
They wouldn't, so they wouldn't give you a legal answer, uh, to, to that question?
Tax question.
I understand.
From the state and federal law.
And I understand.
They're the ones that regulate how retirement, anything we do is under their purview. And, and then there may be workarounds, there may not be. So what God, God is saying is, it is a municipality, and it's, and it, we need to look at.
On individual.
What you're saying is, I think, the concept that we probably all like to have happen.
Mm-hmm, okay.
But the detail, they all will say devils in the.
Yeah.
You know, and so, but I, and I think that's a question that ought to be done in the executive session, frankly.
You got a point.
So, I know, yes, if we can sit down and, we're looking at retroactively, of course, because this is already gonna bring you. We would make it impossible to spot our condition, we get with one of these other programs. So, um, I would like to, uh, at some point, we don't have to decide tonight. I know you're going away and.
Right, but I will look at that spreadsheet. I've really looked at it twice. I'll look at it with, I'll probably have the opportunity to keep it and get it up on, on my laptop.
Right.
Tell anybody, I'll just do it.
Right, uh, because the cost involved in, in maintaining the program from one person over five years is.
Well, the pay, paycheck is a lot of money.
Right.
Beamers, one percent, I believe, if I remember correctly. And the one percent coming from the municipality for administrative, if I'm remembering this correctly.
It's one eighth of a percent.
Okay, I'm sorry. And. It restricted the amount that Mark had put in to three and a half percent. Do I have that?
Well, it's not that simple. There's two routes. There is one where Mark is gonna have a choice, if we go beamers, or he decides, what do I wanna do? But I wanna get a set check amount every month after I retire. That's a, a committed amount subsequent to retirement. And the rates on that are different from this next category that you might have a chance to pick from if we go that route. Which is that you can choose, you don't wanna set amount to get after retirement. You can choose this other plan, which allows you to deposit at five percent. The town won't have to be at five point one two five percent, with the town absorbing that one acre in interest as a cost to it for providing you the program. Uh, and that you just continue to contribute to, or, you know, whenever you decide to retire or to drop on the program.
Yes.
So the one, the first one is right now three point, three point five, I think.
Yes.
With the town at five point one two five. However, the lady I just talked to, because the other lady that I was talking to was a medical lady. I got channeled to another lady. She gave me a whole different sheet. For the set benefit that you're gonna get when you retire, it'll never change. And that rate for you to contribute and the town goes up a quarter of a percent every year till whenever. And it's of, of an interest rate on the amount that's deposited that week.
Oh.
So if we start out at five, and then, and we five and one eighth becomes five and a quarter, five and three eights for the town. It just keeps going up both sides.
We have to keep increasing our.
And every, every, once a year for four years, maybe better plot it out for the next twelve intervals of time. Meaning each year for, for, uh, uh, for twelve years. Uh, going up a quarter of a percent, so which means that our cost is going up, but Mark would have to contribute. I suspect it's got something to do with the fact that the town has underfunded its retirement system for teachers and highway employees. And so forth. So they're making it up that way. This is my, my question. Mark, you're fifty-seven?
Yeah, you're fifty-seven. So he can only have, uh, he can only have a retirement contribution for basis depending on years. Because he has to, is it fifty-seven and a half or fifty-nine and a half? Excuse me, I'm only collecting. Uh, I can't remember, fifty-seven, sixty-seven and a half or sixty-nine and a half. There's one of the two.
It, it may even have changed.
I believe it's sixty-nine and a half.
Cause I. She would have been lying all the way retired at seventy.
Yeah, and then, but that's it.
Oh, after seven, after you retire, of course. And then in seventy was the cutoff. That's why you retired.
Yeah, I believe it's a.
Okay.
And that means, so basically, when we're discussing all this, being as Mark's fifty-seven. We're looking at a window of twelve and a half years that we'll be going, just trying to figure it out.
I, I'm gonna have to stop you here. I'm gonna have to say this.
We can't say without.
We have to look at a type of policy that the town of Brooklyn will follow. With this and any other position that may come about. We can't, it's not just. It is right now, but it's the position. It's a position. So if, if Mark decides to leave, whoever comes into the position would still.
Good guy.
Get that. So we have to come up with a, that's why I like to meet in the executive session. And maybe rethink how to present this to the current employee or ease, uh, that this might in, uh, impact. And so.
One method.
When I, we're, our next select board meeting is the, so some, maybe sometime in October or certain budget season, but.
Well, we gotta get him straight in there soon.
Yeah, I, I think we just put an hour, you know, we come in on some afternoon or some morning, not at the end of a meeting when we're all tired. And sit down and just focus on this, type up the.
Why don't we have the answers first before we have any use? And so, once we, we've assimilated all it, compiled all that information. Uh, taking away from the simplistic approach and adding all the variables and have done.
Well, that's this, right?
What? Yes, which I got at home.
Okay, so, so we will go through this. I have some ideas. I talked to Melissa about it and, and, uh. It would be, it would, it would, it's a bonus. You know how we do a site visit for the dog, border, it could be a bonus.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Could be for listeners.
Because right now.
That would be a policy.
Yeah, I understand. You're trying to make it so, it's for the, you can't make it for Mark, obviously, you gotta make.
And that's all of the consideration. You're doing it under the federal government's guideline. It's a thousand and forty hours a year. Or whatever that works out to twenty-four, twenty-six hours, uh, a week average, okay? Now, if we, if something is done on the side, what's to say that an employee who's working ten pro-bonds a week? Says, you're not in the government program. I want the same thing. There's all kinds of litigation that needs to be looked at before we start getting into vocalizing in an open forum. What it is we wanna consider and how we're gonna go about it.
And the only thing I can say is, we should try to include this before we get to budget season.
Absolutely.
Uh, and we could, and we're, we're going to avoid much now, Mark knows, we're going to, to retroactively taking care of this for him. Uh, if he's lost any interest, we could talk about that, but.
One other thing, Mark, if I can, and if I'm going too long, somebody must. Let me out this sixty-second statement. Say the word now.
Now. Go ahead.
Uh, the beamers program, the first person that I talked with said, we could go back and make up that year that we lost. The person who sent me responses to questions that I presented this week said, we can't do that.
So that's what we're.
So we're in a dilemma.
You don't have the right answer.
Not an easy decision, there's a lot of.
Okay.
So there's reasons why this is of importance. It's important. We should get it over and done with, but.
Yeah.
There's, there's catches everywhere we turn.
Yeah.
So I'd like to say that on the, uh, October fifth select board meeting, that we'll set a date for a, a special executive.
And I will absorb that, that spreadsheet really well, so that I think I, it's twice quick. But I'll read it even more thoroughly.
Well, then, before you do that, uh, I, I included the rate in the first column here for Mark on the beamers. At three and a half percent, because I was under the impression that's what the rate is.
You don't know, not because it's a.
But it was yesterday, the day before yesterday. The, the second person sent me a rate sheet for constant retirement benefit. And that, that starts not at three and a half, it starts much higher than that. Close to five, it's not five, okay? And then.
So the numbers will change.
So the numbers are gonna change. So if you wanna use this, I guess my question to you is, you wanna use this as a rough guide? You can. But if you would like, I can make it more accurate.
No, I'll use the rough guide. We can clear it up later.
Okay.
I got it. That's, that's easy.
So on the flip side, on a date and have.
Mark, that's what I'm gonna say.
I just, I know we've talked previous meetings a little bit about it, you know. You know, there's some where I. Maybe, like, through the winter, I, I won't have many hours at all some weeks. So it's not gonna be.
But that's.
Existing a schedule.
So it wouldn't come out of a weekly paycheck because he's not working.
I didn't know how that could work with.
Yeah, so that's what we, we realized that.
Well, in order to be a part of the plan, I guess, a thousand and forty, a thousand.
Thousand and forty for the year, and he have to have an average weekly hours worked of a minimum of twenty, I think it's twenty-four.
Yeah, I just read that on yesterday, twenty-four.
So if it's not coming out anywhere near that for two months, that's another thing we need to work.
Right, well, shall we move on then?
Good one. Yeah, we just need to, to, okay.
Yeah, so. All right, um, next, uh, email, and down here, the communications, uh, interesting thing here. Um, it's only for our records because we don't have a constable, but it's a reminder that if the town has a constable, they must be a trained. In first aid CPR, firearms qualified, they have electrical weapons training, which is stun gun training. They have to have a domestic violence response training, news support. They, there's an awful lot to do. So when they say, oh, just hire a constable, we don't have that kind of. But that's, that's what does good.
We're bushering people, we're bushering all roads.
And, um, that's all I have for that and the regular mail. Any other emails, um. That. All right, next thing is to approve the instance September seventh. So we'll speak after minutes, we'll go.
Good for you.
By then.
Oh, thank you. I didn't know I wanted to be touched.
Holy.
The last constable was, uh, Wayne Lineau.
Before that writing room.
Okay, right, and then they started changing all the requirements. So that just confirms what, what we've been hearing, uh. Okay, right, and then they started changing all the requirements, so that just confirms what what we've been hearing about. Uh in the past, okay, so take a look at page one of seven for the draft minutes from Wednesday, September seventh, twenty twenty two. Um if anybody have any changes from page one. I had none, any changes on page two? We had none, any changes on page three?
Yes.
On page three, Mr. Yellow.
Second line on the draft minutes, the word premises is spelled wrong.
The word premises was spelled wrong.
Some spell it wrong.
Okay, any other changes on page three?
Well, I question. If first line to paragraph. Uh the three points were Stanford, Brattleboro and Winchester. I don't believe Vermont has a Winchester township.
I have to be um.
It's in the Hampshire.
Massachusetts.
There's one in Massachusetts too.
Right.
Yep, below the Winchester and the Hampshire. So I'm wondering what other town could have been in Birmingham.
I have to have the words down here.
Inseal, Asherlip, Winchester.
Right, yeah, yeah, really.
And first that's many years.
Brattleboro, Stanford and Marlboro.
That's it. Yeah.
So it should say Stanford, Brattleboro and Marlboro, not Winchester.
Okay.
Okay.
That's the three towns they had from day one designated to be the first town started.
Yeah, that's not something weird. He might have met Wyndham, Wyndham County.
No, it's just, well, this is what he told me, that we speak in Stanford, Brattleboro.
Okay.
Those three towns are on the original loop of the three loops that are gonna be done, they're the first run, so it has to be somewhere that part of the state.
Anything else on page three? Page four, any changes for page four? Any changes on page five? Any changes on page six?
Very good, that's. You're really very.
Any changes on page seven?
Nope, you hired too much.
All those in the era are proving that minutes from September seventh as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion is passing unanimous with those three changes. Okay, um. Set agenda for October fifth, uh on the agenda for October fifth, we will set the date for a special executive session to discuss the employment contracts.
Great.
I think that's something.
We'll talk about, we'll probably talk about Br- Brooklyn Meeting House and what happened there.
Yeah, let's turn on all that.
Um what else would you think about?
Uh we're probably gonna be at a point where we're gonna be uh looking to renew the contract with Wyndham Regional on the sand salt share.
Okay.
Cause that expired thirtieth of June of this year, so we're already two plus months and beyond its expiration date. And uh pursuant to our discussion yesterday about the cost thirteen thousand two hundred dollars. I went and re- relooked at that sentence that that thirteen two was mentioned and the way in his phrase. Does refer to those five categories after them, so, so it's not twenty six thousand four hundred dollars, it will be thirteen two.
That we call that, we call that.
Broken up in those five categories, but I still have to ask for the questions that we talked about.
And we're getting reimbursement on that, alright, so I'm thinking.
Well, we are getting reimbursement, yeah, yeah, but the issue, the issue, uh does we, yeah.
We only get reimbursement if we're pulling out of the contract.
Uh I.
Ever seen?
I didn't see anything in this contract that says we wouldn't, but I should ask them.
Wow.
Alright, so we'll, at the next meeting, we'll talk about the Wyndham Regional contract. And uh any other ideas, you know, we'll throw those together.
Oh, I have the bank bond response.
Okay, bank bond.
I keep bringing this up, well, when did we start, not that I'm looking forward to working on the budget November?
I'm gonna have, the auditors should be ready to start working on the last year's audit in October. Um I'll have to ask Melissa about, yeah, we need to get a handle on the budget.
Yeah, well, we we we've given a deadline for appropriations. Was it October thirty, November?
Yes, October thirty.
Okay, and we had a town president this year.
Yeah, mhm.
Thank you. And and so last year, we got into January pretty good. It was getting a little tight, if I remember correctly, the auditors weren't getting too.
Well. The auditors hadn't done some work and that, I'm, but we're ready, we've reached the box and we're ready.
That was a delay.
Okay.
That was the delay.
We we were all set.
We were set.
And they were asked at least, I think by by.
I emailed.
Twice.
Yeah, okay, okay, because David was, from around, was getting a little nervous because he had to do notebooks.
So we asked another thing, I don't know, we're doing these notebooks, the the report.
I have no problem filling in, as I mentioned last year, right after David left the board, but I'd like to know ahead of time, so. So that I have enough time to clean whatever date and whether it's needed to acquire or. Utilize the former template he has on his computer.
Okay, right.
So that I don't have to go back and recreate the lead, so.
So let's leave it on town report, let's let's have a a brief.
Right. He he made a point of making it available to us.
I also wanna talk, get the town planning done.
Yes.
I mean, I brought the town plan, with this back in, the town plan was in two thousand seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty one, twenty two.
By the end of.
It's gotta go, it's gotta start going and you you started the year before, so. A lot of the material will be the same, this historical material doesn't change much, uh but they do have to do surveys and.
Oh, really?
So forth of the community members.
Excuse me. They outside there, you can tell.
Who's on the committee?
Yeah.
Uh well, it was Tom from that, he he passed the the torch to Daniel Kilgarden.
And Charlie Seagull.
Charlie Seagull, Barbara Born, um and so.
Tyler offered to be.
Well, I'm gonna ask Dan, Dan Towler and, I mean, Stano had said in a. When I reached out earlier this year that they could possibly help out somewhere, and so. I gotta get the town plan coordinated and suggest that they may want to reach out to those two residents for for the two or three months of work that they're gonna have to do.
Okay.
But that's not nothing guaranteed.
And this is something we realize, we we really have to worry about.
No, they have a hearing and things of that sort.
Do that.
Okay, so.
Mark.
Uh salt price, you were hoping to get a.
And all the salt prices will get added on this, the salt price.
And so uh, hopefully they can bring up the brief like I am, the COVID.
Oh, the FEMA. And COVID. Okay, very good.
There is something else, but I can't remember right now, so.
We can only have it, so we send you a note and and I'll put it in. Alright, if there's something else, I would like to adjourn the motion to turn this evening's meeting and have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Bruce, any discussion, you have done almost in favor of adjourning meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we turn seven fifty five P M.